I thought it was funny.
Okay, this wasn't an important, earth-shattering enough move to bring him back.
To bring them all back.
Not just the other sister that lives close by, she traveled with her mom.
They both live in DC.
So they travel together.
Yeah, we don't trust my mother to change planes by herself anymore.
Really?
And might get a call from...
I do not get the feeling that that would be an issue.
Might get a call from Seattle.
She seemed pretty spry.
Lady says that she's your mother.
Pretty spry to me. It is four o'clock. We'll go ahead and call the April 20th, 2015 meeting to order with a roll call, please.
Mayor Householder.
Here.
Commissioner Blanchard.
Here.
Commissioner Crawford.
Here.
Commissioner Davis.
Here.
Commissioner Hardy.
Here.
At this time, all who are available, if you would please able stand for the pledge of allegiance in a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, which stands witness under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. So take us to the awards and proclamations part of our meeting.
Item 3.1, a proclamation in support of Let's Move Salina. Jason Tiller, public health educator with Saline County Health Department will read the proclamation.
Okay, a few sneaking in. I tell you what, why don't we hold off and if he, if Mr. Tiller shows up, we'll come back to it. If not, we'll, we'll read it and enter it into the minutes. Oh, wait, perhaps? Jason Tiller? Yeah, okay, great, perfect. Look at that, I just talked long enough, something happens. Looks like you guys were in a meeting before.
Might have been. Okay, well, my name is Rachael Hines and I'm the Community Engagement Coordinator here, as you know, and I'm with the rest of our Let's Move Salina Committee and I'll let them introduce themselves.
I'm Bernika Terrace, Program Director with the Salina Area United Way.
Travis Shaley with the Salina Parks and Recreation.
Jason Tiller with the Saline County Health Department.
Cindy Foley, Director Food Nutrition Services for USD 305.
Great.
All right, well, today we're gonna read our proclamation, but we also want to share with everyone some of our recent successes. As you all know, Let's Move Salina is an initiative that was really spearheaded nationally by Michelle Obama in 2010 and this last year we decided to implement it locally because health and fitness is important part of the community. Since we've been working together in this partnership, we've, we have a total of eight awards that we've received out of 15, so we're tied for first place in the state of Kansas out of seven communities. And then some of the successes that we've had, last summer, 25,000 students were provided lunch at 10 sites and over 4,000 breakfasts were served. Internally, some of the things that we're going to be doing is just making our employees at the City of Salina more aware of the importance of healthy eating habits and fitness and we'll be displaying these in all the break rooms and they will be doing the same. Oops. And then last year, you participated in the school marathon and thank you for that, we appreciate that. And my understanding is you also went to several of the school sites and had lunch with students, so we appreciate your support and we look forward to your continued support. And I'm gonna go ahead and have Jason read the proclamation.
Right. Thank you. Let's Move Salina, proclamation of the city of Salina, Kansas. Whereas launched by the First Lady in February 2010, Let's Move is a comprehensive initiative dedicated to solving the problem of obesity within a generation so that children born today will grow up healthier and able to pursue their dreams. And whereas, as part of this initiative, Let's Move cities, towns, and counties calls upon communities to adopt long-term, sustainable, and holistic approaches to addressing childhood obesity. And whereas, Let's Move Salina led by the city of Salina, Saline County, USD 305, and the Salina Area United Way is committed to five goals designed to promote sustainable strategies intended to improve the health of local constituents. And whereas, goal one, to provide children with a healthier start, Let's Move Salina is committed to helping early care and education program providers incorporate best practices for nutrition, physical activity, and screen time into their programs. And whereas, goal two, to empower parents and caregivers, Let's Move Salina is committed to prominently displaying My Plate in all municipally or county-owned or operated venues that offer or sell food and beverages. And whereas, goal three, to provide healthy food to children and youth, Let's Move Salina is committed to expanding access to meal programs before, during, and after the school day and/or over the summer months. And whereas, goal four, to improve access to healthy, affordable foods, Let's Move Salina is committed to implementing healthy and sustainable food service guidelines that are aligned with the dietary guidelines for Americans in all municipally or county-owned or operated venues that offer or sell food and beverages. And whereas, goal five, to increase physical activity, Let's Move Salina is committed to mapping local play spaces, completing a needs assessment, developing an action plan, and launching a minimum of three recommended policies, programs, or initiatives aimed at increasing access to play. And whereas, everyone has a role to play to increase opportunities for healthy living and to reduce childhood obesity, including parents, leaders from all levels of government, schools, healthcare professionals, faith-based and community-based organizations, and private sector companies. Now, therefore, I, Aaron K. Householder, Mayor of Salina, Kansas, do hereby endorse Let's Move Salina, and I urge agencies, partners, and citizens to recognize the value of nutrition and physical activity and to support Let's Move Salina activities and programs in hope of achieving a more helpful citizenry today and in the future. And witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause a seal of the city of Salina, Kansas, to be affixed on this 20th day of April, 2015. Aaron K. Householder, Mayor.
Great, thank you. What, what events do you have planned? Any, anything going on or just kind of the ongoing program that you all have been doing?
Well, actually, since we will be, we'll have a lot of new bike lanes in Salina, one of the initiatives we're working on is pedestrian safety awareness as well as cyclist awareness and just making sure that everyone shares the road and is safe, does that safely. We're also going to invite you back to the schools this summer to eat lunch with the kids and we're gonna have some fun contests this summer.
Gosh, even me?
Yeah, yeah, you can come back too.
Hey, I'll go for a free school lunch. I mean, I'm not, you know, I'm not too proud.
So, yep, we will keep you informed of all of our progress, so.
Well, I appreciate you all bringing the attention to this. Obviously, as Kansas, I think, slipped six positions, I think, last year in obesity in our, in our country. Obviously, it's very important that we start off young with kids. And the bikes to school, obviously, a great program too. When I was young, there were 80 bikes at a schoolyard. Now, you'd be lucky to see eight, so we've gotta get kids back into physical fitness. And I probably helped move our state's obesity along a little bit, so I can't complain too much, but I think it's a great program you all started and I'm glad you went after it and you all have had a lot of meetings. I appreciate your dedication to it. So, I've got your signed copy here, so whoever... Don't be afraid, I don't bite that hard.
Commissioners, I have some packets for you here.
Okay, that'll move us on to the public citizens forum area of the meeting. This is a time for anyone who has anything they would like to bring before the city commission. If you have something you'd like to bring before us that's not on today's agenda, this is an opportunity for you to do so. We ask that you try and keep it under five minutes, but if it's a really pressing issue and you're not repeating yourself, take as long as you need, I guess. Okay, seeing nobody, we'll move on to the consent agenda.
Item 6.1, approve the minutes of April 13th, 2015. Item 6.2, authorize the transfer of ownership of unit number 481 to Saline County Rural Fire District Number 2. Item 6.3, resolution number 15-7219, authorizing an agreement with USD 305 assigning three uniform law enforcement officers to serve in the School Resource Officer Program. Item 6.4, award the contract for the 2015 asphalt mill in Inlay, project number 15-3063, to APEC, Kansas, in the amount of $887,540.72 plus a 5% construction contingency.
Is there any item on the consent agenda a commissioner would like removed or amended? If not, I entertain a motion.
I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second. Motion, a second, to approve the consent agenda as presented. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries 5-0. That takes us on to administration.
Item 7.1, second reading ordinance number 15-10769, formalizing the property tax exemption for Verus Technologies' new facility located at 1925 Clay Ridge Court.
Ordinance number 15-10769 was passed on first reading April 13th, 2015. Since that time, no comments have been received. Is there anyone from the public here who'd like to speak on this matter? Okay, bring it back to the commission for possible action.
Mr. Mayor, move adoption on second reading, ordinance number 15-10769, formalizing the property tax exemption for Verus Technologies' new facility located at 1925 Clay Ridge Court.
Second. Motion, a second, to adopt on second reading, ordinance number 15-10769. Any further discussion? If I could get the roll, please.
Commissioner Blanchard.
Aye.
Commissioner Crawford.
Aye.
Commissioner Davis.
Aye.
Commissioner Hardy.
Aye.
Mayor Householder.
Aye. That motion carries 5-0. We have no development business, so it'll take us on to other business.
Item 9.1, comments from Mayor Householder at the end of his mayoral term.
Well, that's it? No, no big like. Well, I was hoping there's some fireworks or something. I was... I'll keep it brief because I know the incoming mayor's gonna filibuster here for about an hour and a half. I heard his, part of his speech earlier today, so I won't, I won't keep you too long so we can get out of here early and get the new guys sworn in. I, I'll repeat what I've said from the get-go. First, I want to address city staff. I think, as I've said all along, it has never been something I've said just for entertainment value or whatever. City staff has been excellent. Everybody from, from the guys working in the streets and the rake and the leaves to, of course, our administrative staff who is, who, if, if any of the, I don't wanna bring up complainers, but if, if they had any clue how hard these guys work and the dedication they do and the, and the level of excellence, it would make you think twice about your city. Your city's in, in great hands as far as that is concerned and hopefully up here as well, I think. So, so I go back out and wanna give them a, a good nod of appreciation on my part. I told John that I would ask, I know every year we do an employee appreciation breakfast and the employees gonna come in. I would like to be able to return and serve them some more because I'm still benefiting from the good, hard work that they do and it'd be my honor to come back during those breakfasts and, and serve again. I know it's a small thing, but it's something I would enjoy doing if they'll have me show up. The one thing that I mentioned four years ago when I ran is that I was not going to be a, just a rubber stamp commissioner, that I wasn't gonna just set up here and look at the agendas that comes across and go, "That looks like a pretty good idea, let's, let's move on with that there," but that I was gonna be basically proactive, that I was gonna go out, become part of the community, look around at what the city needed and, in my thoughts, and look at, at projects that I think were worthwhile and bring it back to the commission. I think we've seen the results of that. I mean, I've always been very passionate about the core of our city and the north areas of town and we're starting to see investments. I think if there's one thing, and speaking with someone earlier today, it reminded me of something I mentioned early on when I got into the commission and that is, you know, we're probably not gonna build any big buildings while I'm in office, that there was not gonna be any big plaque with my name on it anywhere, which didn't bother me in the least. I knew that my job was going to be to simply pave the roads that need paved, fix the buildings that need fixed, and, and do those things. But I hope in that process, and I think we're seeing it true, that people have come to see Salina as investment-worthy again, that they really feel like something can happen here. You're, you're hearing around the community, when I hear people speak, they say there's this excitement, this level of excitement that's happening in Salina that hasn't been around a long, in a long time. And I think this commission has been a huge, huge part of it. I know every commissioner that, or mayor that sets up here that's going out says, "Hey, this commission was the best commission ever," and I believe for them it probably was because they never served with this commission or they would know that this is truly the best commission. Everybody brings something to the table. Kay likes to, I'm not gonna go through each of you, so no, but I'll just tell you, Kay sits over here meek and mild-mannered. I'm telling you, she's a pit bull. I mean, she is. And, and was a very eye-opening experience and she brought so much with her early on and I was glad when she was re-elected a couple of years ago because she brings so much to the table with her years of experience with the city and just an all-around great knowledge of our community. And so that was very helpful while we were here. And of course, they all, you, you can see what the rest of them do. They'll be here for a little while, aren't you, figure out what they do. But I, I wanted to bring that out to Kay because she's often the quiet one over here. I'm just telling you, it's, it's a front, so. Those doors close from the public and things get really crazy. But, but I think, I think if there has been any single issue that this city commission has been for, which traditionally I would say special interests are a horrible thing to vote for, but when the special interest of your commission is what's best for the city of Salina, I think that's a special interest I can live with. And I think that it always has been in the hearts of everybody up here and they've done a great job and every decision they make reflects that. And I think we've been very good about taking a look at how the city spends money and making people accountable for the checks that we write to them. And everybody always says the government wastes money and that's true, we do. It's just the nature of the beast. But I think this commission, more than any other previously, has looked at every way that we spend our dollars and said, and when we're giving the money to somebody, we said, "What are you giving us for that money?" And there's programs out there that have been in place for 40 years that I don't think worked from day one. And it took this commission to take a look at that and say, "You know what?" Sorry to former mayor joke out there, I see in the eyes. Maybe you had a tougher commission to work with, but this commission was in consensus when we looked and said, "That's not good for us." And we went back and, and stopped some of those, those poor investments that the city was doing. I know these guys and gals up here are gonna continue with that sort of enthusiasm. The meetings will run long. Jason will probably ask for another raise because we're keeping him here till midnight and so, but, but it's good. They're, they're all in for the long haul and they're here to make Salina a better place. I know that when I leave, they're gonna give me a gavel and so I'm hoping as a newly engaged person that that gavel will work at home as well as it's supposed to work here. I doubt it. But, so I'm looking forward to getting, getting out. I was actually pretty excited for today to come and so it can pass and so I can be out there, part of the, the regular folks again and stand out here and complain and tell them what they're doing wrong every now and again. But I really am excited to get back out and, and spend a little more time. Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah. So, I really am excited to get back out. I did with the gavel part. To be back out there, there's a lot of things I want to do that I didn't get a chance to, to do while I was on the city commission. The Welcome to Salina, Your Opportunity sign, I'm still very excited about making that happen somewhere in Salina. Another project I'd love to see happen soon is the relighting of the top of the United Building and putting some lighting back up there like it used to be there originally. I think it'd be a nice thing for, for Salina. So, there's a lot of little, small projects I'd like to, like to continue and, and see happen in Salina. I think that'll really beautify and keep our downtown momentum going. And, and of course, Adrienne, I want to thank Adrienne for putting up with four years of, of city commission nonsense and my ranting and raving and screaming every time I felt like somebody was trying to take advantage of the city and, and I'm sure I was probably in a bad mood a lot of days over a lot of issues that, that came up, but she stuck it. I won't say she was always smiling. I won't say that she did it with a smile on her face. It's lucky our house has multiple bedrooms because we don't have a doghouse, but I think if I'd been re-elected, we would've built one. But, so with that, I, again, I appreciate everybody. I think, I think the public is now more involved with watching what happens in city elections. I think they're very, we, like I said before, I think the viewership up on, is up on community access from some of the fun antics we've had, but it's all been for what's good for Salina, I think. And I think that trend is going to continue. We've got a great commission here and I feel completely safe walking away. I know it's gonna be tough for them to do it without me, but I think we'll, I think we'll be fine. We're in good hands. And so, I know John, like I said, has about a 40-minute speech he'd like to give, so I'll go ahead and cut mine short and just say thanks, everyone, for your support and, and just keep Salina at the top of your mind as, as the city moves forward. So, thank you very much.
All right, I will now call the new commissioners forward to administer their oath of office. Carl Ryan, Trent Davis, and Randall Hardy.
All right. Oh, yeah, sorry. And I'm taking these, it took me four years to get him to bring vegetables, so I'm taking the last vegetables with me.
Okay, you will raise your right hand and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear...
I do solemnly swear.
...that I will support...
That I will support...
...the Constitution of the United States...
The Constitution of the United States.
...and the Constitution of the State of Kansas...
And the Constitution of the State of Kansas.
...and faithfully discharge the duties...
And faithfully discharge the duties.
...of the Office of City Commissioner...
Of the Office of City Commissioner.
...in and for the city and Salina, Kansas...
In and for the city of Salina, Kansas.
...so help me God.
So help me God.
Mayor Householder, that's it? Okay, I will now call the organizational meeting of April 20th, 2015 to order with the roll call. Commissioner Blanchard.
Here.
Commissioner Crawford.
Here.
Commissioner Davis.
Here.
Commissioner Hardy.
Here.
Commissioner Ryan.
Here.
I will now accept nominations for Mayor and Chairman of the Board of Commissioners.
I move that we appoint John Blanchard as acting, as Mayor and Chairman of the Board of Commissioners.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries 5-0. And I will now accept nominations for Acting Mayor and Vice Chairman of the Board of Commissioners.
I move to nominate Commissioner Crawford as Acting Mayor and Vice Chairman of the Board of Commissioners.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries 5-0. The mayor will now present a plaque of appreciation and gavel to Aaron K. Householder.
Okay, I prepared a script for this. Maybe not take 40 minutes, but anyway, first of all, I guess you're gonna get your gavel after all, so Adrienne, are we on here?
Yeah.
Okay. Actually, there's two, two plaques. The first one we'll give you, we'll build up to the big one. Oh. Is a plaque and appreciation for your four years of service as a city commissioner. And so, thank you for four years of, of serving the community. And then, the nice one is in recognition of service rendered as, in your position as Mayor of the City of Salina for 2014 and 15. And, and just as a quick note, I appreciated being with you two years on the commission and the last year as Vice Mayor as we tackled a lot of difficult issues and, and always appreciated your input and your thoughtful consideration on each of the items that we had to deal with. So, thank you very much. Okay, now, if anybody would like to take a break, this will only take about 45 minutes. So, actually, it won't, it won't take that long. And, and first of all, I'd just like to say a number of thank yous to everybody. Before I get started, first of all, I'd like to thank my family, my mother and father, Richard and Leah, for their love and support. My older sister, Leslie Hoffman, and her husband Dwight, who isn't here, but hopefully will be here later on from Abilene. And my younger sister, Mary Walker, for, for being here and, and thank you to the both of them for, for their support as well. Additionally, I'd like to thank former mayors and commissioners, Mayor Larson and Gilke, who are here, and former Commissioner Abner Purney in the back. And, and also, the dedicated staff, as, as Mayor Householder talked about earlier, we have a great staff and a really dedicated group of public servants that I think do a quite remarkable job in keeping the city running smoothly and looking nice and providing services that I think many times we all take for granted. Water, sewer, all the sanitation workers that are out there early mornings in rain and shine. So, thank you to all of, to all of them for, for the work that they do on a daily basis. And then, most of all, I'd like to thank the citizens of the city of Salina for placing their trust in all of us and carrying out the business on a, on a weekly basis that we do it in the meetings up here, but mainly in, in thoughtfully carrying out elements that are in our strategic plan, in our comprehensive plan, and, and setting policies that hopefully will bear fruit down the road by the decisions we make here. And there's not a lot of instant gratification, but thank you to the citizens for, for entrusting us with, with your business. And I do thank those of you that do take the time to stop me in the store or out in the community at various events and, and for saying thank you and, and words of encouragement. Certainly appreciate that as well. What I'd like to do, I did prepare a few remarks and I thought I'd take the opportunity to do a little bit of a state-of-the-city remark stating that, but also as a report card and a follow-up to different promises, so to speak, that I had made when, when I was running for office. So, I, I'd like to just share with you some of my reasons for running for office and perhaps you can judge for yourself whether or not I've kept my word and fulfilled those. And on the outset of this, I would like to say I wouldn't be able to do any of them without the help from Commissioner Hardy, Davis, former mayor, Commissioner Barb Shirley, and Commissioner Kay Crawford, so, and Mayor Aaron Householder. But, you know, we, we come into office and we make promises and we say, you know, we have visions and agendas and everything else. And, and you know, it really takes a lot of work and cooperation to make our own personal visions fit within the visions of, of each other up here. And as Aaron mentioned before, you know, we, we know what is important to each person. I know that Kay, it's very important that we get the streets fixed and that city employees are, are well taken care of in a, in a fair and just manner and that people on fixed incomes, that, that those are always top in our minds of people that don't have the means that a lot of us have to weather some of the decisions that, that might be poor ones. So, we're, we're very cognizant that we're making decisions based on people's lives and they do have consequences. So, Kay's, as Aaron said, a real pit bull on, on those issues. Commissioner Hardy, I know, was, is very important for him to have community engagement, to hear what citizens want and what their concerns are. Also, a very big thing was to move the economic development model forward. And then also, we need to find ways that not only attract young people and families, but retain our young people and families. And Commissioner Davis, although you've only been with us for three or four or...
Eight.
Eight months?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Time flies. For several months, I do know that based on the campaign and what you have done is that you two are very concerned about vulnerable members of the community, but also how we move forward in looking at things such as recycling, health issues, a healthy community. And the, the knowledge you bring to this board is, is immeasurable and it's great to have you up here. Mayor Householder... Mayor Householder, very interested in real estate, like myself, real estate development type issues, and what we need to do to make Salina a more attractive community to visit and invest in, but also making policy that encourages redevelopment and not just new development. So, I appreciate that. And then also, as I get into my remarks here, I welcome Commissioner Ryan, and I look forward to learning what your issues that are going to be important to you, and to help all of us work to make sure that those issues are addressed and help you succeed in those visions as well. Some of the things from the Salina Journal questionnaire, I think every candidate gets these, and that is, is why are you running for office? And in a nutshell, the reason I was running for office, I felt that the experience that I had as a professional planner and landscape architect would, I'd be able to bring some skills to this job that I had used in the planning and development of successful communities that I've lived in in the past and worked to develop. And I felt that those tools gave me a unique opportunity to see the benefits of efficient and sustainable growth. And so, my main reason for running is what some of my work with North Salina, I felt like I could help to craft policies that would lead to more, a more balanced approach to development and have more sustainable, long-term growth, which is balanced between new development and redevelopment. The main thing I was really looking at was, were policies that would lead to long-term economic viability, vitality, quality neighborhoods, and a more attractive community. I feel like I have proven that I have the courage in my convictions, that's what voters need to know, and also that, you know, I'm not afraid to take on difficult and unpopular tasks that I feel are right and feel like it's, we're most efficient when we work together with a spirit of cooperation. One of the biggest challenges that I think that we face, not only two years ago, but moving forward, is we need to resist the temptation of trading our long-term economic sustainability for short-term gains. Bigger's not always better, and the easiest way is rarely the best way to go. We need a balanced approach to development that takes advantage of our existing assets and infrastructure in the most efficient manner possible. We need to strengthen and expand locally-owned business opportunities, and these will help to broaden and secure our economic base and provide us with future economic development opportunities. So, some of the things that I think that we've done in moving forward is, and I'll just add, when I ran, I ran pretty aggressively, those of you that can recall, I ran really aggressively on redevelopment and reuse. Some of the things that we've made decision-wise over the past couple of years as a commission that have been along those lines and that I'm very pleased with is that we continue to support and enforce the adopted property maintenance code. I think that by doing that, we help to make Salina a more attractive community, and as a former mayor would say, it makes the place a lot more investment-worthy. People will tend to invest in places that look better. Second part, and a fairly substantial part, was on our special assessment policy. And what we did on the special assessment policy is that we changed a policy that publicly financed private development. We changed the policy on the use of those assessments by changing a word "will" to "may," which basically gave us the opportunity to take into consideration things such as fiscal impact on our municipal budgets when we build new roads and infrastructure. But also, it allows us to make budgetary decisions now that won't be severely impacting budgets down the road. Our long-term financial and maintenance obligations are something that we need to take a critical look at, and if we are going to continue with special assessments, we need to make sure that they are done primarily in areas of redevelopment, and they need to take into consideration high-quality neighborhoods with amenities that add value to these neighborhoods, things such as open space, street trees, walking paths, sidewalks, things such as this, things that will add enduring value. A third thing, and Mr. Hobby and his staff is working with a consultant on our comprehensive housing needs assessment and working with community engagement, we've got several hundred surveys turned in, and that's something that we're all very proud of as an accomplishment, that we're able to have that underway. That'll be a great tool moving forward, allowing us to know where our shortfalls are, and also help to identify tools moving forward for redevelopment and renovation. I think one of the biggest things with our commission has been to adhere to the key components of our comprehensive and strategic plans. You know, our comprehensive plan is our shared vision of the future, and it was very important to the people up on this board that we don't look at what's our vision of Salina or what works best for us. It's what have the people that have put together that shared vision, working together with consultants, staff, and members of the community, through their input and community surveys, to craft that policy, and it's been very important for us to not only be good custodians of that plan, but also to recognize our role as a governing body, to not only implement the plan, but to oversee the implementation of it, and to also craft meaningful policies that help to move forward the goals of that plan. A big thing that this board has accomplished has been to continue to support Salina Downtown Incorporated, the North Salina Community Development Group, and our newly-formed Salina 2020 Group, in all of their efforts to revitalize, rehabilitate, and redevelop downtown North Salina and the areas of change. Just a summary on what we've done on redevelopment and reuse, I'll leave you with this thought, and that is, is that projects that strengthen downtown Salina, utilizing our existing assets and infrastructure, not only are consistent with our shared vision for the future, but they can serve precious resources and tax dollars, as well as add to our quality of life and our uniqueness. A second big issue, and I kind of limit this to kind of two big issues, because that's probably enough for one day or two years, and that is, the way that we've done economic and community development over the years, we took a big bite out of changing the model for doing economic development. For years, it was done by the Chamber of Commerce through a contract, and there have been ups and downs in that. There have been times where it's been successful, and there have been times where it has been much less than successful. And so, basically, we decided to move towards a different model of doing economic development, and quite frankly, it was time to do this. All across the country, there's been a paradigm shift in the way that economic development has been practiced. The old economic development paradigm counted on cheap land, cheap gas, and cheap labor. It was a shotgun approach to recruitment, and the key driver was low-cost positioning. Well, the new models across the country for economic development, and I think that we're going to start experiencing this, today, the successful economic development efforts and economic development organizations are about laser recruitment, and they're about high-value positioning. So, those are the things that we're going to be focused on with this EDO. And just another thing, too, and it fits really in good with some of our community partners, USD 305 and our institutions of higher learning, and that is, is that today, the highly-trained talent is a lot more important than cheap labor, and investing in education is far more valuable than adding new streets or widening streets or building new industrial parks. So, some of the keys on our side of the economic development organization, and the key partners in this, of course, are the Airport Authority and the Chamber of Commerce, as well as the county and the city. Placemaking. We're going to be mostly focused on placemaking, and this fits right into what we're trying to do with redevelopment and fixing up the aesthetics of the community. Basically, aesthetics are important. Research and studies have shown that placemaking returns dividends. There's actually a term called a placemaking dividend, and that is to say that people tend to stay longer, spend more money, and come back more often to places that attract their affection. And so, if you think about downtown and other nice areas, people are going to come back and spend more money and be in places that they like to be in. People don't hang out at strip malls. They don't sit down and park benches at Walmart. So, we have a really good opportunity to apply placemaking tools to downtown and other parts of Salina. Things such as gateways, which provide a nice welcome to visitors and provide a really good first impression. I mean, everybody's always been told, you never get a second chance to make a first impression. So, the first impression that we make to people coming into our community is very important. We need to identify and prioritize that. But also, I think gateways help to welcome back residents of the city and instill a sense of pride in residents. Preserving historic buildings is big, and also public art. So, those are also big and important components of placemaking. And these are things, too, that make our community unique. And as far as the economic development value of that is, Ed McMahon with the Urban Land Institute has a saying, and he says that the image of a community is fundamentally important to its economic well-being. And so, I think what that says is that people tend to want to invest more in places that they see as investment-worthy and nicer, more attractive communities. Couple other quick things is on economic gardening. We need to work more towards economic gardening on building within, building from our existing businesses, help them to grow. We have a lot of new businesses that are looking for a way to get up to the next stage of growth, and we really need to focus a lot of our economic development dollars and efforts on helping them get to the next step through different incentives, but mostly through education and through helping them with consultants that can help them move up that economic ladder. Also, helping startup businesses is important to an economic gardening effort. One thing that I feel like we can do on the city side is that we can help to provide leadership. The city of Salina is the seventh-largest employer in our community, and for nearly seven years, our employees have gone without a cost of living adjustment. So, as we enter a new budget cycle, I would like for fellow commissioners to work together to help staff identify areas in the budgeting process that we can work towards making that a priority, and hopefully lead by example for other employers in the community to take a look at their wage structures, and also, if we want to help move wages up, I think we can start by helping to lead in that process. And just a quick thought on investing in your community. I think everybody can ask themselves this question, who would invest in a community that wasn't willing to invest in themselves? So, when we look at investing in our community, we're investing in ourselves, and I think that gives the green light to people from outside of our communities to feel like they can come in and make a safe investment in our community with us. Just a quick last thought, and that is on community engagement. As we said, there's a big, it's a big priority with this past commission, I think it will be moving forward as well, that successful communities communicate and work together on a shared vision, and we can only do that through good, solid community engagement. We have a new department, it's an old department with a new name. Our old human relations department is now community relations, and we've hired a community engagement person to make sure that things are moving smoothly, not only that we can hear what, or tell the citizens what's happening and where to go, what to do, how to get things done, but also to hear back from them and get feedback on, where do you want a dog park? What do you think about our housing needs assessment? What kind of housing do you want to see? What do you think about downtown? Different things like that. We're looking for ways that we can better engage the community through social media, through technology, and, you know, sometimes it's just, and this commission has been really good about it, just getting out and talking to people, the old-fashioned way. So, community engagement's very important. Staff does a great job on that, and we really, in order to be stronger leaders, we need to have committed citizens, and we need to get feedback from them and make sure that they're engaged as much as possible. Just one last thought, and I'll leave you with, and it's not quite 40 minutes, but I'll probably talk fast, so. This is another quote, and I'll just put a plug in here. If you get the chance, Google Ed McMahon, Urban Land Institute, and watch some of the videos that he puts together. They're really, I think, inspiring for identifying that, you know, we have challenges in our community that we're trying to develop and redevelop, but so is everybody else's. There are 25,000 different municipalities and communities across the country that are competing for the same things we are. Many of them are doing this now, the things that we're looking at doing now, have been for quite some time. We need to embrace change, and we need to help move the ball forward on that. There's a lot of education that we need to do, and we're, I think, committed to helping that education process along. But here's the thought, is that every community has naysayers. Whatever the civic or community's leaders propose to do, some people will always say things like, "You can't do it. It won't work. We already tried that before," or "It costs too much." And no is a very powerful word in a small community such as ours, but leaders of successful communities know that an even more powerful word is yes. And so, I'll leave you with yes. In Salina, we can create the type of community that people want to live in, and we can make Salina a better place to live, work, invest, and visit. So, thank you, and let's all get to work and make Salina a better place.
Well, I will accept a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Have a motion to adjourn in a second. Anybody want to add anything? Nope? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. We're...